Okay. Hi, everybody. Thanks for coming out again tonight. My name is Kurt Larson. I am the chairman of the Special Zoning Commission tonight, and I call the August 13th, 2025 reconvene meeting of the Village of Johnsburg Special Zoning Commission to order at 7:00 PM. We'll do roll call. Member Barrett?
Here.
Member Bank?
Here.
Member Black?
Here.
Member Calhoun?
Present.
Member Dixon?
Here.
And member Loud?
Here.
Okay, you guys, we'll do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we begin, you guys, you know, our public hearing was kind of closed, but I'd like to open it up. So if anybody has anything they wish to talk about or make a public comment, we're willing to listen. I do know we have one member right here, Mr. Mike. Mark?
Merritt.
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 Okay, come on up.
I appreciate the opportunity. I spoke the last time we met, and I just wanted to reiterate, if I could again, you know, the fact that I think this gymnasium in the village is just a huge positive for the residents, for the village. It's a positive for our wife family. We have two daughters that live in the village, six grandchildren, three of them take advantage of the gymnasium. And as I was thinking through what I wanted to share today, I was thinking back to the comments, and Jim, you weren't present here, but the comments that Tom made and Dan made and Roger made about the low risk that this text adding to industrial would be, there's just very limited risk and tremendous value to having that occur, not only having the gymnasium in the village for the residents and for a couple of entrepreneurs, but also for, it's just a great thing from a business standpoint and just, I think, from a village standpoint. So when I think of what Tom shared and Dan shared and what Rogers shared, it seemed like it was really positive. So I want to encourage that because I think that that's the message that we want to send to others coming into the village or wanting to bring business in. I know that there were some concerns from Mr. Dixon and Mr. Calhoun that, you know, I haven't seen the property or I didn't visit it, and I'd love to see it. So Steve, at some point, I would really appreciate if you shared what you thought when you went over there. I know Mr. Ellsor put a lot of improvements in the property, both inside and out. Your comment earlier, it wasn't the same building that you saw eight years ago, and it was radical.
No, definitely.
Yeah. So I'd love to hear in a little bit of detail, if you can, what you felt, and is this a positive for the community? Mr. Calhoun, you were looking at it a little bit differently. You were feeling like, what's this going to do with other potential industry if you add this to the industrial zoning? What's it going to do kind of going forward? And, you know, is there any risk to that? And I'd love to hear if you have any thoughts or reflections on it, given, you know, the time since the last meeting, you know, from our perspective or mine, limited risk, something that's positive, even if another...
Mine's just, we presented him with an opportunity to go B1, which makes it conforming. He's nonconforming right now. If we keep adding stuff to nonconforming, it makes him even more nonconforming piece of parcel. We have to, you know, this is our book that we're given with all our stuff in it, and that was written, we paid for somebody to come in and do this for us and tell us what we should do, you know. Again, we're just an advisory committee.
Sure.
I'm just voicing my concerns. I talked to Mr. Heeman, him and I had a great conversation one afternoon talking about this, and I've talked to a lot of people, but we put this in our I zoning, and it stays there forever, and we can't get rid of it. You know, so his property's nonconforming, we're going to make it even more nonconforming and allow it. And we've had previous people that looked at the property, wanted to do some similar things, and they did their due diligence, and were told no. Does that open up a door for a lawsuit to us? Because if we give this to them now, we told those guys, no. There's a lot of apples on the plate here that we don't entirely...
Yeah, I wouldn't mind chiming in on that a little bit, you guys. The gymnasium, let's start with that. The gymnasium, I think, is an awesome idea.
I'm not saying that I agree with you.
I agree with the gymnasium, but as I read back through all this, I have multiple concerns for one, it's 15 years from now, and this is I1. We know what to do with this property because it's I1. If it's B1, we know what to do with this property. I really can't condone mixing the two together on a 1.42 parcel of land because it's just not good. And little couple of concerns is if you start going back to the dates, the village really tried to work with everybody this on April 10th, 2024. That was over a year ago. And the village did very hard work on solving this for them. Really, like you said, Mr. Ellis, this property should be B1. That's it. You know, that's really what it should be.
Why?
Condoning it to, because in 10 years, we have somebody else buy the parcel, and now it's this hodgepodge mess that we are going to have to deal with. So, and the other issue a little bit I have, you guys, and not to be negative, because like you said, I love the gym idea, I think it's super awesome. I love that you're doing some entrepreneur-ing, but this property has been in violation for over a year in my eyes, and I see throughout all the documentation. The B1 with conditional use, with B1 with conditional use will help for your gym, it will help for your storage of your stuff.
Who will he help? Who does B1 help? Does it help the village or does it help me?
It don't help the village.
It doesn't? Then why was it proposed by her, proposed by him, proposed by you, proposed by John Heeman who's not here?
Mr. Ellis, let me speak. Let me speak. It's my turn to speak, so I'm going to speak.
Okay.
Like I said, we work hard. We worked hard on a variance for that same property, which was not followed, was not followed.
Right.
Wasn't followed. And now here it is, years later, that was in 2016, and we go back, and like I said, we go back to May 8th in 2024. Very hardly, they despite, they figured out exactly the way you wanted to run your business, you know, what you needed to do to, you know, pertain because of lack of information to you on your part, I'm not sure.
Yep.
But like I said, 10 years from now, if that land is I1, we know what can be done on that land. That's, you know, pallet company, that's it. Not palleting company, marketing company, gym, and whatever else anybody wants to do with this property. If it's B1, we know exactly what that can go on that property. But to confine the two of them, it's, how does that, all that does is really, I don't see that variance. I don't understand.
I just find that very odd for you to say that. What is my business? What do I do for a living? What, how does B1, how does B1 work for me?
According to you, that you were not going to manufacture on this property.
At that time, I was not. It's been over a year. So I have some fun facts to share tonight.
My concerns, Mr. Ellis, is this, you brought this to the village, and the village in April 10th of 2024 gave you answers, and you opened the gym anyways.
No, that's not true.
But, well, I could be wrong.
But you are wrong.
I'm just reading all the documentation that's in front of me. So July 16th, 2024, you know, attendance at June 27th board meeting, you know, we go here, and you guys, we're not trying to be bad. We like, we want this stuff to come to our town, we want this stuff, but it's got to be done proper. We can't, it's, to rewrite ordinances and do all this stuff is not proper for a 1.4 piece of property. This is not. Proper would be being B1, Mr. Ellis.
No, no, you're actually wrong because, for one, you've never asked me anything about my business. Mr. Calhoun has never approached me in the last year and a half.
It's already.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
What if I said in every single meeting, right, I'm a broker now, and my background is manufacturing, that's what I've done for 16 years, right? I had to get up and not compete, my not compete is over. Well, things have changed. I am now buying a pallet manufacturing facility directly over the border of Wisconsin, which I'm dedicating a million dollars to growth, okay? The equipment list is what I just handed out. For me to move some equipment down to this building, I'm not going to let that sit vacant. You can kick the gym out if you want, I'm going to put manufacturing in there. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I get a little upset about that. We are not kicking the gym out.
No, it's my turn to speak now.
The gym was never allowed.
Now it's my turn. You say B1, 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 okay? What does B1 actually say? Is established solely for the immediate, actually, I'll let you answer. What is B1? What does it allow me to do?
It allows you to have your offices in the front, it allows you on a conditional use permit, you could stop having all the stuff in the back of it, you could build a fence and store your personal stuff in there with the conditional use service.
I restore all my stuff there.
I1 is a pallet company, that's it.
I restore all my stuff there, and you know what? Zoning changes. You say nonconforming, nonconforming, that's why I'm here today. If it passes...
You're trying to mix...
If it passes, I am no longer nonconforming, okay? This has been, this has been my fight for a year and a half. You think I want to know every single move about zoning? You think I want to spend all my time on this? No, I am an entrepreneur, and my business changes, okay? I'm not trying to get a little hot here, but since then, I'm buying a pallet manufacturing facility. So I guess it's on you as zoning board to let me know what you would like the face of your village to be. When people drive down Chapel Hill Road, do you want them to see a positive community where 10 members come and go five times a day, which has been there over a year, zero complaints? Or are you going to be happy when there's bunks of lumber, recycling, because that's what I do for a living, cardboard, OCC, film, stretch film, that's what I do for a living? And you know what? I buy and sell it all day, and I send it to other places. Well, guess what?
My concern to my villagers and violations are coming over here.
When this is gone, it's still my turn, it's still my turn. Okay, when this is gone, that's going to be the face of your village coming into Chapel Hill Road. It's going to be lumber, forklifts, trucks, okay? Because that is what I am entitled to do, and that's what I do for a living. Do you think I make any money off of this gym? That is peanuts, it's nothing to me, okay? Me moving manufacturing there, it's 100X for me, okay? It is, it's not about the money for me. It's about what's good for the community. All my best friends, I met my business partner, my best friend, I'm staying up at his wedding in two weeks, I met him at CrossFit Gym. Sam Schaefer, please answer here. Okay, I've met all of my best friends. You're getting very defensive, but you're on the zoning board, and you're not supposed to get defensive. You're supposed to know, you're supposed to do what's good for the community.
I'm just reading facts to you.
Hold on, I'm still talking.
Well, you know what? I don't appreciate being cut off.
And I don't appreciate it being cut off either.
One second, if I can, if I can interject here.
I just, everybody knows so much about my business, they've never asked one question of me about my business. B1, B1, B1.
Can I just interject for a moment?
Sure.
So let's do this.
Okay.
Mike?
All right, yeah, so we're going to take this and go to the questions from the board.
Well, if I could, just a moment, just so that, Mike, did you have any more thoughts during your public comment?
Yeah, I just want to, if I could clear yourself.
Yes, you can, and Jeff, you'll have a chance to finish as well if you wanted to put out your thoughts. And then let's bring it back to the board, but let's try to keep this orderly.
I am, sorry, I wasn't trying to be defensive. I was just reading facts that this has been going on for over a year, and the violations have never been repaired.
The violations? Why do you think I'm here right now? What do you think I'm doing? I would not be nonconforming.
Guys, let's move on. Guys, I don't want to listen to this. It's going to be a disruption to this meeting. I want it to run smooth, okay? This is my first time hearing it, and this is a shit show right now, and I don't like this.
I basically watched the video five times, and then you would be better than on our last meeting.
I have.
Mike, what if you finish your thoughts? We'll go to Jeff.
I didn't mean to be disruptive.
No, not any.
I apologize.
I don't have the eloquence of Jim.
I just restarted asking all the board members.
If anyone else wishes to speak, they'll have a chance, but Mike, why don't you finish your thoughts and comments?
My point for just understanding what was raised at the last meeting, Mr. Calhoun, Mr. Dixon, was to understand how you felt because you had some concerns. At that meeting, we seem to have very positive comments from Mr. Black, Mr. Bank, and Mr. Loud about what was, was going to happen with this property and adding it. I'm not sure what the mixing means, but what I, you know, from my perspective, it was adding a text just saying that gymnasium or health club added to industrial is, is what was, what was the decision here today. Was it anything else about rezoning it or this or that? It was, can we add this text? And what would that impact be to the other folks that have I zoning today in the village? I think there's only a couple of other properties. What would happen if someone else came in? And that was a really good concern. So I, again, I think that's the issue. And is a gymnasium good for the village? Is it good for the, for the, for the residents, for the image, et cetera? I think that should be the focus. I think we're pretty close. I was a little surprised that there was delay because I kind of thought that the people were ready to kind of do this the last time we were here, but there were some concerns that I would like to do this and do that. Mr. Dixon did that, Mr. Calhoun, I'm assuming you did that too. So I'd like to focus back to that and not have a really a debate or an argument about this or that or what was shared or what, you know, Mr. Ellsor's options are if this doesn't, you know, you've got, you've got, you know, Dreah here who's invested a lot of time and effort into this, and it's great for the community. You know, this, the decision in front of you today is, do you recommend adding a text for gymnasium or health club, which to me is a huge positive, very low risk to add this and let it go into the village board and let the village decide then what to do and what to do, what to do with it going forward? There's so many other things that could be, could happen there and be very negative. You know, and again, I want to move back to Johnsburg. I've lived here for 30 years, I happen to be in Richmond, but I'll share an experience. Two weeks ago, there's a piece of property borders up to our subdivision, and guess what? Right now, anything could go in there, truck stop, truck storage, recycling things, it bothered every single, we had a village meeting with the planning committee, and there was an option on the table to put, to make it residential from where it was zoned today. And did people want in our subdivision 37 townhouses there? No, because it's 37, maybe, you know, 150 more cars, but that was the best option, that was the best option for the alternative because no one wanted the property to be sold to a trucker or a truck stop or a strip mall or, you know, you know, a bar, restaurant. So that board made a good business decision. All I'm asking for you is make a good business decision that's low risk and very safe and very positive for the community. Adding a text that says a gymnasium or health club, you're limiting it to that. What's the, what's the downside to that? It's a huge downside.
I love it, Mike. I love it, I love it.
Seriously, I mean, we, who, who would not, hey, listen, I think this gym is going to really hurt us. Who's going to say that? So let's focus back on the real issue. I mean, we, and we could talk about, you, I, John Heeman and I met, and we talked, and I know John is so passionate, I love him, I love, I love him because he's built with principles and values, and so is Joe, and that's what built this, this village, is on principles and values. How do we not, how do we sit here and not want a gymnasium in here? And John said, hey, there were mistakes, you know, there were mistakes years and years ago. We inherited something from the county, we should have done this, we should have done this. Okay, got it. I don't want to kick the can down the road, was what John Heeman said to me. I don't either, but guess what? Maybe that's the best thing to do, kick it down the road because it's ugly right now. Just get this going so that Dreah could have her health, the gymnasium, you know, let the property continue to go the way that it is, Jeff's done a great job of doing that. And the what ifs, you know, I don't like talking what ifs because that's not very, that's, that's what ifs down the road 10 years, and I understand that, Kurt, I really do. But today, this is what we're facing. So I encourage you, let's get back to the, what's...
I love the idea of the gym.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Jeff, did you want to finish your thoughts and hear from anybody else in the public who wishes to speak?
I think there's a couple more people that'd like to speak, I believe, maybe, maybe not. Okay. I mean, if we want to keep it with...
Jeff, so did you want to proceed or did you want...
Me, I would love, I would love to continue.
Did you want to finish your comments?
Yeah, I, yeah.
You're welcome.
And I'm sorry for my close, slightly here, but I am extremely passionate about my business, and, you know, I put over a year and a half into this, and this is not what I want to focus on ever. Like, my businesses, I have five different businesses, and I'm an entrepreneur, I'm going to continue to grow businesses and put more businesses here and here. There's opportunities pop up every day, every week for me because we're, you know, that's just what we do. And yeah, maybe a year and a half ago, no, I wasn't in manufacturing, and I didn't know when that was going to be. That is my background, and now I'm back, I'm back in it, and it's a flip of a switch, and it's like, you know, as Mike was saying, it's like, if the gym's been there over a year, we haven't had one neighbor complain, we haven't, we had one traffic incident, we haven't had any parking incidents, we haven't, there's been nothing but positive things. You know, everybody's concerned about the subdivision that's not really built yet. Okay, well, what is the subdivision going to like? A local gym right next door? Or are they going to like the sound of nails, clap, 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 all day long, and chop saws? You know, because that's my business, that's what we do, it's very loud, it is what it is, and that's what's going to go in there. You know, I take all these opportunities, I pass them off to other pallet companies, other recyclers around our area, Woodstock, everywhere else, you know, those opportunities I'm bringing in house. I'm not giving up margin. If I have the space to do it, I don't do it now because, what am I going to do, stack bunks of lumber and cardboard in front of where she's supposed to park? No, I'm not going to do that. I'm doing it because I believe in a gym, I've told you that several times. I just, I hate to hear this B1 jammed down my throat. I know B1 is what the village wants, but the village should have bought this property if that's what they want there. I bought it as industrial, knowing my background and what might be there in the future. I couldn't do it when I first moved in because of legal things. I'm past that, okay? It's kind of funny, I don't go to her gym, which seems odd, but I'm very loyal to my gym. It started in Johnsburg, okay, it's CrossFit MFC, it's since moved to Spring Grove for the last, I don't know, six years. Today, just randomly, I'm like, it's four minutes from here. I'm like, huh, let me just look up the zoning there. It's McHenry County, it's four minutes from here, the building's industrial, zero issues. You know, that's what CrossFit gyms are, they're boxes, they're in commercial, they're industrial. I look at Firehouse Gym right down the road, smaller piece of property, probably three times as many cars, and you drive by there anytime, every time kids get dropped off, parents are there, there's 20 something cars in every event they have, it pours out on the street and up and down that road. I mean, anybody that lives around there can attest to that, and that's backed up to a subdivision. Has there been any complaints? Has anybody in town said, we need to shut Firehouse Gym down?
I wouldn't know that.
No, no, no.
I guess I don't understand the connection.
Here's what I mean, it's a gym, and it's allowed in C1. Guys, I asked to go down to C1 initially, and I was told, no.
Let's finish with the comments.
Nonconforming, nonconforming, you can't do this, you're not conforming, right? From the minute I sat in that room a year and a half ago...
Just a question, man. I didn't, I didn't understand the connection. Thank you for clarifying.
I'm just kidding, you know, I don't mean to get loud, there's a microphone here, I should probably turn this way. But from the minute I sat in there and asked for this gym, you know, I didn't know, Flex Industrial was how it was listed, everybody saw it, I know what you guys are referring to, Ty Brog was trying to buy it, he lowballed them several times, they dropped his offer and went with my offer, I'm sorry he didn't get it. He didn't drop the offer because he couldn't do multiple things, he wanted to store boats there and do all kinds of different things, okay? Like, that's not what I'm trying to do. I probably have enough boats that I can store as many boats as he wanted to, but the point being is, when I sat in that office, I was told from day one, never a question about my business. Oh, no problem, B1, B1, you're fine. I didn't even know what B1 is, right? I walk out, I research, and I'm like, absolutely not. You know, B1, here is the true definition, B1, established solely for immediate neighborhood. It is intended to provide convenience shopping for persons living in adjacent resident area. permitted use shall be those which are necessary to satisfy, satisfy basic shopping needs which occurs on a frequent or daily basis. Do you think that is going to be a, a, a strip mall or a 7-Eleven? No, it's not. In fact, I'm only surrounded by three properties, okay? I have one resident all the way down the side, the guy loves me and his wife, they're fantastic, and I have two vacant lots surrounding me. So B1, if, we could even go to, we can go to your zoning chart, let's, we can go up and down B1 and see if it fits my business. Nobody here has asked me if it does, and it does not, but everything in my pallet company does. Lumber storage, building materials, storage, equipment storage for vehicles, warehousing, recycling center, exactly what I do for a living, I recycle wood pallets, cardboard, plastic, and so I do every day across the country. Production, storage, lumber. Again, what I'm asking for keeps me from doing what my main business is, which you guys will not like, trust me, but I'm entitled to do it based off of your zoning, and I'm not changing my zoning. So if you feel that it's necessary to kick this gym out, like if that is what everybody is so set on, back to Mr. Calhoun's comment, you know, we're not going to further make you nonconforming. I'm not further going to be nonconforming if this is passed, I'll be conforming. I've tried everything else, Mr. Calhoun, I have tried a special use, I've tried a conditional use, I've been told no. But departments who are not conforming ask for a special use, and were passed because they're supposed to clean the property up. They never cleaned the property up. Guess what? I was never asked to clean the property up. I cleaned the property up because that's how I live my life, and that's how I present my property. I'm on the board for my, my town here, I'm on the board for another property because I care about where I live. My kids go to school here, my kid goes to football, I donate to every frigging program you could think of here because it's my community, you know? What I'm asking is not a lot, I'm asking for less for my building. And if this gym's face here 15 years, that's 15 years that you don't have your nail pops from there to the river, because you will hear that, and that's, that's just the nature of my business. I'd invite any of you to one of my pallet manufacturing places, you won't like it, it's a nasty job, and it's loud. So for me to move any of this equipment here, this would take me half of an afternoon, and for me to move all the employees that I'm acquiring are all from Illinois, they would be happy to come down here, trust me. These are the same employees that I had at my last facility, we had 300 employees and $120 million in sales. These are the same employees that went and started another company that I just bought, so they would be thrilled to come down here and snap together pallets and crates. It is not what I want, you know? It's not what I, 100X on my money if I did it, but I'm willing to take less of my money. I'll donate her frickin' rent to the community, that's how much I care less about the money of it and more about the principles of a gym in our community. And I'm done speaking for the moment, but if there's anything else that comes up, I'm happy to speak on it because I am very passionate, and I don't like when people say this is what's good for you without asking me what's good for me and my business. If you'd like to see, here's four minutes down the road, here's the industrial piece of property that our current gym operates out of, which is awesome, McHenry County, zero issues.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Jeff mentioned earlier...
Sorry for getting so heated. I really apologize, but I really do care a lot.
Thank you, Jeff. I understand Jeff alluded to other people who wish to speak. Were there others who wanted to provide public comment this time? If you would, if you'd be able to just state your name, address, and go ahead and provide your public comments.
Hi, I'm Andrea. I'm the one that owns the gym. Address, you need, address?
If you would, yes.
Yeah, 2510 Winterberry Trail, Wonderland. From Andrea, I own CrossFit CXX. I've owned it since it opened in 2022. We used to be located in McHenry and just due to a really high front there, I was looking for a new building to make us a symbol for the company and moved into Justin Clay's building last May. It's been awesome actually growing and coming into Johnsburg, I think much to our surprise from a membership standpoint. Johnsburg had a lot more small town vibes than we had in McHenry. And parents talk to parents. We have kids that want to work out together and a lot of people from within the Johnsburg community have come. We have a kids program there. All of a sudden, kids friends come and then I'm coaching their parents the next day. So it's been great moving into Johnsburg. We have about 55 members and now we see over 80 members coming through our gym. So it really has been a great move for us. With moving into an old building came a lot of expenses that we built out. So it was a big investment that I did take on coming into this gym. Don't regret it. We love the space that we're in, but I wouldn't be able to swing that financially. Again, I do have a family to provide for. I have a baby that turns one tomorrow and we have a six-year-old. And unfortunately, I just, it would not be smart to put another $50,000 plus into a new space. So the end of CXX or in Johnsburg would unfortunately just be the end of CXX. We just say, I can't swing it financially if I, if I do have to move. CrossFit is a niche workout. It's not what people are Googling, what's the local gym like a planet fitness and going to? People do, they travel for it. They, if they find the right community, they will go to it. And so CrossFit is really big on first responders. My community is made up of firefighters and police officers and nurses and educators and they're coming from Richmond, from Antioch, from Fox Lake, Bolo, Wonderland, Resilake, you name it. I have a lot of people coming to this gym and that don't frequent Johnsburg. They probably wouldn't come to Johnsburg otherwise but for this gym. I think it's important to point out that Clay and Jeff are not fighting this fight for themselves. They are fighting it for me. I think Jeff has kind of spoken to, if he wanted to have some selfish benefit out of this or his business, he would kick my ass right out. It's not. I, this really, they just, they know the value of CrossFit. They see the value that it has for me and they are fighting like crazy for me. It is, it is not for them at all. So I just hope that you consider me and my business and my community when you guys are making this decision today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to provide comment to the Planning Zoning Commission?
Yes.
Please do so.
Hi, I'm Kristin Seibert and I live in this community. My husband and I have lived in Johnsburg for around 14 years now. I love this town. I've never lived in a small town before and I really appreciate and I'm proud to be a part of this community. I love to support any business here. And I was really excited when I found out about the gym right around the corner. I didn't know it was a CrossFit gym, but I love fitness and I love that I, and I don't have kids and I don't go to church. And so I was finally happy to find a place that I can be part, more part of this community. CrossFit CXX is not only a place for working out, but it's a place where people from our community and surrounding towns can come together for health and socializing. I think in a small village like Johnsburg, this is a real asset. And I hope the place that I'm so proud to be a part of would promote and support these kind of establishments. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seibert.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time? Okay, we'll close the public comment session of the meeting and bring it back before the village. I'm sorry, the Planning Zoning Commission for consideration and a vote if it's so inclined.
So can I, I didn't get a chance to really ask some questions maybe?
Yeah, no, exactly. That's what we're going back to right now.
You don't mind, we might skip him to me. So just a couple of clarifying things that I was curious about. As far as what's proposed to us right now, is the language still including I2? Or is it only going to be proposed for I1?
It would be I1 because there's not two acres. There's 1.4 to 1.4 acres.
I was just curious because.
I2 would have to have two acres.
On, on our agenda, it does stay permitted use in I1 and I2.
But if you go to the, I2 needs to have two acres.
Sure.
C1 needs to have two acres.
Right. You know, I mean, in reality, he's not proposing for his specific property. That's just a byproduct of what he's asking for right now. So in, in reality, he could be asking for I1 and I2. So I guess just to, just to be absolutely crystal clear, we're only asking for I1 at this point. Is that true?
I think that distinction was made at the last meeting and it's in the minutes.
Right.
The petitioner actually said that he was pulling the I2 off and he's solely asking for the I1.
I can take I2 off. That's fine. There's no other I1 in the, and so there's, there's.
You're the only.
Nobody else would come back and say, hey, well, you know.
Was, was there purpose under I2 for, to include I2?
Not our intent initially. You know, I think when I ordered up, I just, I put industrial and there's, I don't need it in I2. No, I don't need it in heavy industrial.
Okay, yeah. No problem. Does that clarify that for me? So maybe just to talk kind of from my perspective, I always like to add my two cents on what we're looking at. My feeling is, and I think I share the feeling of everyone up here. Everyone is in favor of being pro-business here in Johnsburg. There's no doubt about that. It may not seem like that to you right now, but I assure you, we are all for that. As we sit up here on this bench, we remove all emotion from the decisions that we have to make. Because we have to look at the property in perpetuity. 100 years from now, 200 years from now, 300 years from now, that this language that we're going to put possibly in, adapt, adopt, however we want to do it, is going to stay there forever. So the things that we think about aren't necessarily just for the benefit of the village for an existing business right now. We look at it from the, from the village benefit forever. So I just always like to remind everyone that emotion is, is not in our realm of, of taking into that. We all have hearts, right? We talk on our heartstrings. I love the business idea. Like it's, it's super, it's super neat. It's super exciting. We don't have that. You're drawing people in. These are all positive things. The low risk aspect of it, certainly. You know, there's not much to it. You know, I, I kind of danced with this, you know, since the last meeting and even before about, you know, how does this not just affect the scenario that we're looking at right now, but how does it, how does it gravitate outward to any other scenario that we could possibly see to set precedent? And that's what we have to be very careful about because if we set precedent for future people to come in front of this board, we don't really have a leg to stand on. So that's where we try to think about every possible scenario that can affect this property. So with that being said, one question that I have would be, if we're looking at this scenario of taking a lower risk business in an I1 and conforming to a B1 scenario, right, is what we're looking at.
Or C1.
Or C1, sure. Okay. What would happen in the inverse, right, if we were to do this? Meaning if someone was B1 and they said, you know what? I would like to propose to have my property turned into an I1. And I meet the requirements based on your I1 zoning. I can potentially increase the value of my property because an industrial zoned property will typically have a higher value potentially. I know that was part of the concern about losing value by, by downgrading your zoning. So could someone maybe help me understand, is that some, a possibility to have someone come that direction on us?
I was told once you go down, they'll go back up.
But if we set the precedent for someone to allow a business with B1, could someone turn around and say, I would like to do an I1 in, within my B1? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, anyone has the right to petition for any zoning classification. From B1 to I2, I2 to B1, to C1, R1. So first, anybody can request any, they have that right. It's a First Amendment thing. I think two, people can always argue for precedent and say, this is my take on it. You know, you've heard some of the comparisons to even a gym that's outside the village boundaries being used as an example of precedent. So can someone argue that precedent?
Sure.
Whether that's persuasive or not to use it in as a special zoning commission, I can't speak to that. But sure, anyone can try to put forward that argument.
Wasn't precedent set when the variance was given to that same property?
I think precedent would be set for that specific variance.
Right.
Which was, the variance for that was additional.
The variance in general.
And that's right. That's right. I break it up. Years back in 16, we sat here and listened to everybody's set. And so we allowed it. And then it was never done. And then there was nothing we could do about it, you know? So that's, your passion about yourself, we, we got a little passion too. It's, you know, like you said, what is best for the community? And we love, I've been here 35 years, you know? Got on this board in 08 and that's why, that's just, I just read stuff that I read and it's like, all right, what can happen to us? Because, you know, sometimes all of a sudden a lawyer's going to come in and throw us a curveball.
But there's another I1, is my opinion. It's like, you know, somebody else in I1 might come back and say, hey, well, hold on, he did that. But there is no other I1, you know? And, and you know, the other thing is, is, you know, the pallet industry is a dirty business. If it's not clean, it's not pretty. And what you said to me in the last meeting is, you would hope departments cleaned that property up and they didn't. But I did, you know? And I, and I plan to keep it clean. And that's just me, you know? And that's just us.
And sometimes I just, like you said, in business you get into it and it's like, you know, it's a pretty small piece of property and you want to, you go industry, you know, it's like.
Right, and I don't play, I change.
I wish somebody would have bought it and put a house on it.
I kind of, I kind of look at it this way, right? Like we inherited that property when we annexed in from unincorporated McHenry County. So that, that zoning came with it. That was part of those stipulations that happened. I think everybody could argue the fact that that, that property has no business being in an industrial district, right? It's, it's, it's a unique property that had it at a point in time. When it comes to the way that that property is right now, where it's located, I find it very odd at that point. So.
It was industrial before Johnsburg was incorporated.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
The house is built around it, you know? There's a lot of history there. If you ever look up the history, it's quite incredible.
I used to hit golf balls there. I used to hit golf balls there when it used to be the driving range.
Right, right.
With the VW out there at 250. So, you know, I mean, yeah, absolutely. You know, and before that it was a cornfield, you know? And, and you know, that's how it all is, just like the high school was surrounded by cornfields too.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's.
Things change, you know?
It does.
It's like zoning, tax amendments, tax amendments change. Do you think that there's laws, rules that were here in 1900 that haven't been changed by now? Have, has, being on the zoning board, have there been any other tax amendments that have been changed since all of you have been on the zoning board? Tax amendments change.
Sure.
Times change. Laws change. Communities change. So for me to ask this now, it doesn't mean it's locked in for 100 years. It doesn't mean in 15 years from now, maybe I'm like, you know what, this other pallet company is drawing absolutely through the roof and I'm just going to move the whole business there and sell it? You know, when this property was for sale, if the community next door that's building a couple of houses was, was injured, was, was upset about industrial, well shit, they should have bought it and rezoned it. Or the village should have bought it.
I don't think anyone's unhappy that it's industrial.
No, in fact.
It's just, it's just trying to figure out how to make this work.
Right.
That's all, that's all we're doing right now. So if we look at it, right, like nobody likes how it got here, right? Like, so let's, let's look at it in, in a really isolated scenario, right? We all know that that property is very odd being in a zoning or industrial zone, right? So that, that's one piece of it. We don't, the other piece is, nobody likes how we got here, right? You got, you got railroaded by attorneys and realtors that misled you down the property. I looked up the listings. I saw the word flex in there. You know, even, even today, I looked it up again and I saw, you know, class and it just says flex. Now, you know, does that entitle anybody to anything at that point? That's a whole different world. So nobody likes how we got here. Now that's a different piece.
Learn my lesson.
So now, yeah, so now, so now let's, let's talk through, how do we make this work? And make it work so it can stay with the village and everyone's happy from, from a village standpoint, that it's going to be beneficial and that it doesn't put us in a predicament for any other property or any other scenario that somebody can go, aha, I got you guys because of what Jeff did over there. Now I can do that here. And that's what we have to protect, right? Everybody wants this gym here. It's a great idea. It's awesome. So.
We're not just saying I1 because you're I1. The next piece of property comes in and they're going to put 50 I1 units in. Now we have to look at that. That's what we're looking towards. Just because you're I1, we're not picking on you. Don't, don't get me wrong. And I know what your business, I know what pallets are about. You know, I know everything about pallets and how to build them and everything. But we're not picking on you. We're not picking on your business. It's the I1 zoning and the text amendment to I1 zoning that will stay with the I1 zoning. And that's what we're, that's what we're faced with right now. And we're not, Andrea, we love, I should probably look at the gym in fact.
I have a question for you too, though. Usually what's allowed in lesser is usually allowed as you go up in a property. Is what I've seen, is what I've kind of seen even in your own zoning charts, you know? You know, the fact that gyms are allowing all of the zoning and then it stops at I1, you know? I can have an athletic field. I can grow marijuana there. There's like a whole bunch of, you know, weird things that I can do there. I can have an athletic field. So, you know, again, I don't think we're far off. We're talking about a gym. We're not talking about a chemical plant, right? Like, you know, a chemical plant, want to put a million square foot in the middle of town and open up an I1 chemical plant? And last minute they said, you know what, we're done with this project. And Lifetime Fitness came in and said, yeah, we'll pick it up. We'll buy it because it's allowed there. That would be tremendous for our community. You know, anytime there's health and wellness, it's tremendous for our community. I don't see any negatives with adding that into that. Our surrounding communities have it added into there. There's no issues there. You know, it's just, it's a tax amendment. You guys change them all the time, you know? I see a bunch of tax amendments changed over the years.
Changed a few.
Yeah, you change them because they can be changed. It's not forever. It's not set in stone. And I just think that allowing this would be the most beneficial thing for our community. Zero incidents over here, zero.
I don't think anything, anything is concerned about that.
One complaint, Greg Clemstein, which he's retracted since then. He's apologized to me 100 times every time I see the guy. You know, it's, that was the one complaint.
I don't think anyone's saying that there's problems or there's going to be problems or anything like that. Nobody's going to.
Back to the global view of industrial zoning and having the text amendment that we're talking about going to a gym. I look at, you know, over in Spring Grove, they tore down the whole pneumatic factory because they couldn't fill it or do anything with it. I look at other communities that have large industrial spaces or even, you know, commercial retail area that, you know, the Amazon ran them out. They kind of just absorb into gyms. I don't see a negative in that happening. I, like I said, I agree with Jeff. I just think it's a positive. And I don't see how long-term it's going to affect anything that we do here and say, okay, you can put a gym in industrial building. I don't see that as a negative impact that's lesser than that. So my opinion of it is, is that it's, it probably should have been in there, but it was an oversight because we were thinking more about what you could do in industrial space and not the lesser, lower risk. Right. So, you know, I, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't across the board want that in our industrial spaces. Because they can always go back to industrial if they want, but.
I think about someone that's going to, you know, think about the, in the past, the people that have come and petitioned us about changing zoning, you know, to conform to what they're trying to build. You know, the workforce apartments, right? You know, we had to change that to, to make it work. You know, obviously we've heard about the gas station at a point in time too. You know, dealt with the, the wraparound for Redwood over here.
Dunkin' Donuts.
To try to go. Dunkin' Donuts, that was just a sign. Yeah, that was just a sign.
Wasn't that nonconforming?
The sign was not. They changed the height of their sign because of the road elevation versus the parking lot. So. But, you know, just because somebody gets a not, like one nonconforming or like a, like one variance doesn't set precedence for any variance. It just, you know, anybody, like Michael had said earlier, anyone can come petition. Anyone could try to argue it. It would just be, you know, if someone was granted a variance for a sign height and they say, well, now I want a variance to completely change what I'm going to do on that property. Yeah, that's a tough argument in my book. But so in, in, I think about, the one thing that would concern me is someone that's going to come and petition us to change to industrial in an area that is undeveloped right now. That they're going to try to maybe build a little bit of a, a smaller business park and they're going to petition us from a, from a commercial or a business zoning to go into an industrial, right? So under that scenario, if we change the language, that would follow those properties too if they conform to I1, right? So in my mind, it, like what Tom said, is that how big of a risk is that for, for a gym? For a fitness club to be in that kind of an environment? Personally, my daughter is in cheer. I, I drive all the way to East Dundee and I drive into an industrial park for her cheer gym. You know, when I was, when I drive her to Barrington for the other cheer. Say it out loud. It sounds stupid. But, you know, I drive into an industrial park. So, you know, it, it's kind of the same scenario. I, I don't see that. However, is there a possibility, and this is the one question that I've had loaded to come here with, is, is there a possibility of not using this language, however, turning this into a conditional use which would then only attach to that specific property? And then that would negate kind of any other property unless they then applied under a precedent set for his property?
I asked that initially and I was told, no, because of nonconforming because the property acreage was raised to two acres in industrial. So that, I understand is probably to push the industrial out, right? But that's the reality of it. So I also didn't know that. And I'm learning a ton about zoning, right? Like never had these problems with all the other real estate owners. I asked for that. Can I have a conditional use? Let the gym stay. She'll stay 20 years. Fine, a gym stays there 20 years. I'll never put a single nail in a pallet there, ever. Fine, a gym stays there 20 years, I'll never put a single nail in a pallet there, ever.
So, Jeff, can I ask you one question?
Sure.
I'm not trying to get answered.
Yeah.
You just said it, you made a statement. She wants to stay there 20 years. Change to B1, she can stay there forever. It's all done and fine and dandy.
But if her gym fails, or something happens, if somebody broke their leg there, right, and her gym goes under, then what am I gonna do with that space while I'm at B1? I'm a manufacturer, right?
You can do a lot of things with it.
Well, right, but nothing, you're taking a pallet?
Not under the...
Can I do anything with wood pallet manufacturing or recycling?
You can do some recycling, and you can start lumber there and...
In B1?
You can start lumber there and recycle or something, no?
No, not in B1.
No, no?
I misread it, Tommy.
Yeah. I went through all these about B7,000.
Yeah, me too.
I know, you know, I don't fault you for not wanting to go down to B1.
You said it, I wanted to ask you the question.
Yeah, and I'm, thank you, and I'm, yeah.
And it's just...
This is when I stepped home, when I was told B1 initially, and that's when I started going through it, and I'm like, "Well, man, manufacturing my background, you know, I can't, you know, B1 does not work for me." I read the description, I mean, it's not even close to working for me there. Maybe there's some other businesses I own.
You've said a couple times that you didn't, you don't wanna move your manufacturing here. You've said it a couple different times in the last meeting and this meeting, so then...
Yeah, but I know it's very profitable for me.
To me, you've said it two or three times, then why won't you make the change to B1? And then, everything, everybody's, and she's there.
But why would I?
Well, because you did...
Why would I?
You're also running with three or four businesses out of there?
Brokerages.
Brokerage.
Two brokerages, which are ran by the same people in the same office, same amount of cars, right? We do it for separation of liability. So, it's the same girls taking the same calls, answering the same emails, but if somebody sues me in my, in my packaging brokerage, it's not gonna affect my pallet business. I mean, I think I have 21 LLCs, you know, overall, between the real estate and different businesses and whatever else, and it's just a protection thing. So, you know, sometimes, the reason we had separated that as well is, we work with a lot of packaging people in the industry, right? So, if I go into a packaging company and I'm Pallet Partners of America Packaging, they're gonna say, "Well, screw you, dude, you're in packaging too," right? Well, we have to separate those businesses for a lot of those reasons, so...
So, hers have been a third, though, your, what'd you call your...
No, we don't own that business.
I know, but it's in that building.
And that's acceptable, though. There's nothing saying I can't have two businesses there. I was told that for a long time in the beginning of this process, but when you actually read the text, it says "one principal building," it does not say "one principal business."
I read it, but maybe I missed that part.
So, back to my original question.
Yeah.
So, and I know you asked that question, however, I'm gonna ask that question now. So, is it possible to change this language to go to conditional use that would tie to their specific property, therefore, it somewhat negates any potential? Is there, are we all done with I-1 going forward? Is there, is there zero possibility of someone trying to get I-1 if there's... So, let's say somebody does a development out in the fields headed out to Ringwood, right? And we turn that, somebody comes and they buy it, I can't remember what it is right now.
Eight acres?
What's that?
Eighty acres?
Yeah. And says, "I wanna build a business park, and I wanna subdivide it, and I wanna have 20 I-1s and 20 I-2s."
I mean, that, you're asking the village to predict the future.
Well, I'm not, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, if someone came there, like, we will still allow if someone wanted to go down that road. We're not saying there's no possibility of I-1 ever again, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I need. I'm not asking for the village to predict. That's, that's my job, right? To anticipate the future on things that we're talking about today, right? So, in that scenario, let's say that this somewhat negates that fact, and it would only apply to someone at I-1 to set precedent for a specific gym, or they can argue that it would be something similar.
I think what you're asking for is, rather than a permitted use, have it listed as a condition.
Conditional use, sorry, conditional use, yes.
Yes, the use itself included in, under the I-1 district as a conditional use.
Say that to what?
In the I-1 district, list the gyms as a conditional use, something that can be requested, and that condition can be placed upon it.
Yes, yes, and then we can ask for certain conditions at that point too, right? Correct.
And so, they could say conditional use, but the problem is, I can't apply for it, because I'm not conforming. So, you can list a C there all you want, but it doesn't, it doesn't do anything for me, because I'm under two acres, and I-1 has to be two acres or over.
That, it doesn't work that way, right? Because a condition...
You're, you are, your lot is nonconforming, and it'll always be nonconforming.
Because you told me because of use.
Right.
Pardon me?
You told me because of acreage.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't, you don't have sufficient acreage.
Right.
But I don't think we're talking about that, we're talking about adding a use as a condition within the district that you are, an industrial district.
So, let me, I guess, reiterate at this point, if I wasn't clear before, anyone can ask for anything. That's your right. You can ask for any, "I'm industrial, I wanna go residential."
Careful, not anything, right? We can't have giraffes in the gym.
You can ask for it, but...
Remember that meeting, no giraffes are used for a gym.
Just because it doesn't say you can't have giraffes, we need to get out.
So, the only concern I've got is that that's not what was requested.
Right.
And what was published, so...
Right.
Part of this is, you're also putting the public on notice that when you publish for this, this is what we're asking for, and I think that currently what was permitted, what was published here was the proposed amendment for permitted use for... Guys, for each other. So, I mean, the thing is, can anybody ask for anything for...
Of course.
You know, many mentions giraffes, we've had chicken requests, you know, anyone can ask for anything. So, the only procedural issue that I've got is, that's not what was requested, and more importantly, it's not what was published that put people on notice, this is what was requested. It's a permitted use.
But if he came back, if we tabled it and came back and requested it, and did a new public notice, he can do that.
So, I have a question. If he, if he chose to...
I was also told I don't need to notify the public, because I'm asking for a tax amendment, but I did it anyways.
No, all right, okay. Guys? That's, that's not true, that's false. Who told you that, that you wouldn't have to publish for a tax amendment?
I was told that I really didn't have to let the neighbors know, because it was a general tax amendment.
Jeff?
I'm not asking for my building, I was asking for a tax amendment.
It's a state statute, this isn't a local rule, okay? This isn't a bylaw that the village came up with. It's been on the books for decades. So, let me, let me just finish. Let me just finish. You have to publish that notice in a newspaper, okay? We don't get to change the tax amendment on the down low quietly without notifying the public. It's been the rule for decades, it's a matter of due process.
Sure.
It's required, it's what the Supreme Court says, Illinois, it's what the federal Supreme Court says. So, here's the thing. It's something that if Jeff chose to do so, in his sole discretion, he could request that, request anything. But, I'm not going to agree that not publishing for a tax amendment is kosher. Whoever told the petitioner that, I think is just way, way off base in not doing a zoning thing.
Sure.
So, am I clear on that?
Crystal.
Okay.
And I wasn't suggesting that.
No, I...
I was just asking if it was, you know, a possibility of...
I didn't mean the paper either, by bad, I was talking about the neighbors.
No, but Jeff...
I was talking about the neighbors surrounding my place.
Jeff, so let's, let's focus on this. So, the question before the board tonight is whether this is an appropriate permitted use. If Jeff wishes to, in his sole discretion, it's up to him, he has every right to ask for whatever he wants, so to speak. He could ask for a conditional use, he may choose not to, for whatever reasons that he thinks are in his self-interest. But, as we've done every time in the past, if there is a tax amendment that has to be published, that's state statute, that's the law of the Supreme Court, and that's been the case for several decades.
I would like to do whatever the board would like me to do, to keep your agenda going. If that's tabling it and putting it back in the paper, I'm happy to do that. If it's keeping an I-1 and I-2, I'm happy to do this tonight right now. I want it this far.
I know I'm definitely not a fan of anything in I-2 for this, as of right now, but that was already taken out, right? It was already taken out, so that's, so we're, that's fine.
I just didn't know if I can republish it.
With I-2, I thought.
I think that's understood.
Yeah, okay, so that part. I mean, my, my personal opinion, and I hope this isn't too suggestive, but it's going to be pretty crystal clear, I would be much more of a fan of asking for a conditional use, instead of just putting a tax amendment for I-1.
So, Michael, would you, they would tell, tabling that, he would have to put a new notice in for a conditional use for I-1, correct?
Yeah, but only, only if Jeff chose to do so.
Sure.
And then, two, just realize that with conditional use, by analogy to the variance as well, you can put in conditions that are reasonably related to that use. And, you know, what this commission has come across is where the occasional variance that may be requested, an example of a reasonable condition would be screening. You know, if, say, for example, someone wants to move their garage closer to the lot line, and we seem to maybe get impact, we'd like to see the hedge roll of charbroil. But, that would mean, one, withdraw the petition, I'm not sure, I don't wanna put Jeff on the spot tonight, this is a big thing for you to withdraw.
Feel free, please.
Well, no, I mean, this is, you know, two, if he were to request that, he could do so. But just realize, that's not a blank slate to impose conditions that may not be related to the use. Two, conditional use is a legislated finding that if the petitioner finds the, meets the criteria for that special use, or conditional use is sometimes called, he's entitled to that. You know, is it, is it the same thing as a permitted use? No, not quite, because there was a public hearing, but I don't want the Planning Zoning Commission to think that they have a blank slate to decide that. No, if someone asks for that, this came up last week with respect to Hidden Harbor, that, gee, if it's a special, you guys, you guys can say whatever you want, you can impose any condition, it's not true. You know, there's a Supreme Court case from 2008, we talked about that, and, but, there would have, there'd be a big decision by Jeff to withdraw this and publish that.
What would be the negatives for me to, you know, I'm here right now, you know, if I came back and asked for a conditional use, I guess I don't understand, like, what that means to me, you know? Is it just me putting this in the paper and it's, okay, now we come back and we all talk about it one more time, and now it's a conditional use? Or, I guess I don't understand what, what...
So, with a conditional use, I'll mention it again, if it's a conditional use, that's a tax amendment, that would have to be published in the paper, there's no getting of a notice. Secondly, to the extent that conditional use is gonna be requested for a specific property, notice does have to go to the adjacent property owners. I think it's within, don't quote me on this, but I think it's 250 feet. And that's additional time.
That's okay.
So, that's what it is, and, you know, there's a, there's a reason, it's not, it's not as if the village can waive a notice, it's recorded by statute.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I don't, I don't think anyone's trying to force it down, it was just a question of, is it possible? No, it's not possible to do it tonight, so that's fine.
I think what he's asking, Mike, is, what's it, so, conditional use is gonna follow his piece of property, his piece of property only, when he asks for that, correct?
That would confuse them.
No, anyone, if the conditional use is put out there as a tax amendment, and then in turn, so let me analogize to Hidden Harbor too. The Hidden Harbor person is asking for conditional use tax amendment, one, that's published in the paper, and then, two, he's also requesting that, oh yeah, what was the term? It's not man cave, car cave.
Oh, car, motor cave, motor caves.
Motor cave, the motor cave conditional use be applied to his property. If you sitting as a planning zoning commission recommended it, the village board approves it, he's asking to put this on the books, secondly, apply to my property. Notice in the paper, notice in the paper and to adjacent residents. So, it's a two-step process. And then, what I've also explained is that, my opinion is that the majority of the case law says, if you request a conditional use, that runs with your land. There was a disagreement between the Hidden Harbor attorney that says, "Nope," disappears with the person.
No.
No. We're not zoning for a person. We're zoning as to whether this is an appropriate use for the land. There's a single case involving Arabian Horse Farm in Palatine, where I think it was the county board that said, "This is gonna go with the person, it disappears when they move on." But that's not the conventional thinking. It does run with the property. You know, can you try to put limitations on it? Yes. You know, you'll see the county with certain high-intensity uses, say, for gravel pit, that I'm not analogizing to this, five years. There's conditional uses that, if they're reasonable, if they're reasonably related to the use that's being requested, you can do that. If the conditions are not reasonable, they may not be upheld. So, I mean, it's, it's reasonableness. And so, that would take additional time, that would be rep publication, and, you know, the only thing is, I don't wanna put Jeff on the spot tonight to decide that. He may have to talk to his counsel about that, to say, "If I go back to the drawing board and start over," if he doesn't withdraw this. Does anyone have any questions about that on the...
I have.
No, Jeff, I don't want to...
It's getting a little more confusing.
I'm so concerned about going to the status of conditional use, because I already went there.
That's why, Jeff, I'm not pressuring you. Yeah, I started with that, I was told no by the trustees, that, "Sorry, you're, you're not conforming, you can't, you can't do that." So, I feel like if I withdraw this, do that.
I understand. And that's why, Jeff, I'm not pressuring you. To say, "Make the decision here tonight." No. I don't wanna say, you know, "I made a snap decision." So, I think that, I think the issue that unless Jeff withdraws his petition, what he's asking for is a permitted use in the I-1 zoning.
As a board, I, I know we think of the future, it's all about the future, protecting ourselves, but gyms aren't gonna hurt the community, obviously, I'm not worried about that. Are we in any legal, right, if another business comes in, like, "We did it for a gym, why wouldn't you do it for a bar," or whatever, I'm not saying, they still have to come in front of us and get approved. It's not just like, 'cause we're allowing gyms, health clubs, and spas in there. Anyone can try to do it, but they still have to come in front of us.
Other people can come to the board and ask for two things. They can ask for a tax amendment, we want an additional permitted use on the books, or say that there's a conditional use in their district that's authorized, make it a church.
Yeah.
They can ask for that special use permit in that category. And so, you know, can anyone make any argument as to why they think it's appropriate?
Sure, sure. I just feel like, like Tom was saying, it's such low impact for good things, pretty cut and dry, is how I'm looking at it.
dry is how I'm looking at it. And it's not gonna hurt the village 100 years from now, unless there's other businesses that can use this as their, their license standing, saying, well, you did it for the gym, why wouldn't you do it for... But they would still have to come in front of us, or whoever's here, and still go through to trustees, and...
Yeah.
We wouldn't let, allow, well, as a small community...
If that petitioner, like Jeff, is asking that a tax amendment, yeah, if for permitted use, or even as a conditional use.
I go back to when we did these zoning districts, and we went through and tried to think of every possible thing that could go into a B-1, B-2. And like I said, we never thought that an industrial property could want a gym. Why is it not in there? Well, it was never really a thought of it being bad. It just was never thought of.
Right.
And I don't see any point in, if we're going to allow across the whole town that you could put a gym in an industrial building, why that would be bad and be added to the text. And that's where your decision tonight is, is that, take Jeff and all the drama, everything going on here tonight, is that a problem for the town? Or was it just an oversight? And I look at it, too, as a lot of these industrial places that are vacant have turned into this to fill the buildings, you know, so...
I don't think it was an oversight. I mean, I was not at all, this was a process that's evolved since 1956.
Yes.
You know, and what I suspect occurred, I'm guessing and speculating is that when these classifications were established to keep uses compatible, what were industrial uses? I-2, and it's not necessarily the rule, but usually the higher number indicates a higher intensity.
Sure.
With I-2, what are the higher industrial intensities that would be appropriate and compatible? And so, and just because, I know that the previous planning zoning commission's put a lot of time into this a lot.
Yeah, it's fine.
So, no, I don't think it's an oversight. I don't think it was, gee, we forgot to leave this in. It's just that at that time, it's a, what are compatible industrial uses of this intensity and I-1 and a higher intensity?
And that's what I'm saying is, when you look at the industrial use, there's people working there, there's people doing things. Adding a gym, I mean, a lot of corporations have gyms. I don't see the impact. It was, in my mind, it's kind of an oversight that it wasn't thought of as an industrial use, but it probably is part of an industrial use.
When's the last time that that was reviewed? Was that in 2016?
I think.
When they kinda went through and rezoned properties?
2020.
2020, was it?
So that's kinda what I'm like, this is in front of us. Like I said, take all the history out of this. What is the problem of adding a gym to an industrial I-1 zoning? I don't see. I see it as a benefit, not a negative.
I agree. I agree 100% on that. What's the best thing for Johnsburg? Gymnasium isn't gonna hurt this community, you know, it's gonna help it a lot. It's just, we've got enough knowledge and history here, guys that grew up here, went to school here, be the outsider, but wanted to do something for the village, Johnsburg, moving from Lakeside, wanted to come by and help the community with ideas. I have the opportunity to sit here as one of the members and listen to the history of what's going on, and be that fence rider, but make a decision. My final decision is always gonna be, what's the best for the village in Johnsburg? These guys are beating their heads in it now, here trying to let the gym go. What a ride. Taking the, taking the how did we get here out of it, that's, I think, what maybe clouds some judgment at this point. Whether it was... I wasn't finished, but there... Oh, sorry. No, I am too, I didn't interrupt you, but there again, we're gonna take each situation as it occurs, no matter what zoning it is. And we're gonna look at it, pick it apart, and come up with the ideas that we have. And as a group here, we're gonna decide what's the best for Johnsburg. And there's some, there's some good people on this board, and I think we work together pretty good on it, so.
Yep.
Think we need to, you know, this is the best for Johnsburg.
Yes.
There certainly could be something else going in there, we wouldn't be at the campers' room. Ultimately, we have to be concerned about the fact that if there is another I-1 property, right now there isn't, but if there is another I-1 property that comes into our village, or someone petitions to move into I-1, or some sort of industrial district gets built out in one of our undeveloped areas, and someone asks for that... It's gonna come here to make a decision. Are we willing, are we willing to say to any one of those properties under I-1 that a health gym, fitness club could go in there?
And the other part of it, too, anybody could have bought this property and done the same process and come before us and asked for this.
Exactly.
So, I don't look at it as, hey, you know, I wasn't told, or I was gonna do that. Anybody could have bought it, anybody could have brought it before us and asked for the same thing. So, I, that's kinda where I'm at.
I think I actually talked myself through being okay with the way that this is proposed under I-1. I came here with a very different opinion, and I've sold myself on this now. I would actually be in a position right now to make a motion to...
Jeff, can I just...
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Merritt just brought something up during the meeting. After a previous first meeting, I did go to the old Red Can Building, now I see Palat Partners.
As we all know it.
Yeah, just sticks in my head. 100% testified, Jeff and his team made improvements in, you know, infrastructure, flooring, walls. There are two separate bathrooms, there is a separate middle area. Something I brought up in the meeting was that right corner kids' room, it's just what you figure it is when you're looking out, and you know what? Health equipment, you know, dropping a bike, obviously. So I just wanna acknowledge what Mr. Merritt has brought up, first. Second, you know, Jeff, you did bring up a lot of back and forth with the village and the trustees. You gotta also see from our perspective, that last meeting, that's the first time that that comes to us. And we're the, you know, we are the final recommending board, we're not, or, excuse me, we're not the final recommending board, but we're advisory, the last advisory to the final, which is obviously the village trustees. So a lot of this information, we get it, you know, a little bit prior to that previous meeting, so that's why, you know, some of our questions come off as rough, or, you know, it's word clarifying information from our perspective. So I just wanted that to be put out there.
Same way, you know, like you said, you get this information, so start looking deep into it, and now we start seeing this history, and that's why I didn't wanna come off bad about it. But, you know, there is stuff in here, in construction, project managing, documentation, it's all that. And there's a little comment, oh, the health department looked at it, do we have documentation for that? Is it in ADA compliance? You know, these are just things that go through our minds, and maybe we needed more time to get, you know. I started doing research, you know, I seen back in a year and a half ago, you know, I'm seeing in May, and when there was questions about it, but everybody was acting anyways. So, you know, it's like, oh, I'm gonna do that, you know, like I mean?
Yeah.
You know, like you said, I like to say that, you know, following the rules, and we have a rule, too, you know, I mean, we have certain ways that are due process that we need to follow.
I will.
That's why I was coming up to, like you said, it's clearly everybody loves a gym.
Yeah.
It's a great idea. You know, we love the gym a lot more than we love pallet mainly, you know what I mean?
Those people do, yeah.
But, like I said, sometimes it's due process that needs to be kinda flowed through, like sometimes can't tell anybody what they can go down and what they wanna do, but they need to have information, you know what I mean? Information is important, so.
Great job renovating that building. Last time, it was probably eight years ago, and it looks night and day, as you know. But again, you know, we have to clarify the information, answer the tough questions for everybody, best in law, both you, the village, everyone. Everyone up here can 100% say the gym is phenomenal, what you're doing, your sales. I looked at your office, infrastructure, it's what you testified of, you got a couple people in there, sales, you know, account management, internal operations. So I just wanted to clarify some things, and, you know, I agree with what Mr. Bank says, Mr. Merritt, Mr. Loud.
So, can I, I'm sorry, you got one more question, sorry.
And my last thing, too, is...
We can always recess this to another meeting.
Sure.
If we're gonna keep doing so. I think this is my last one. I think this is my last one. So, if we were hypothetically, if we were to make a motion to approve this, to obviously then move to the village board, no, right? The health, like, all of these businesses that would fall into this tax amendment would fall under any scrutiny from a business licensing standpoint, right? Like someone had just said, ADA compliant bathrooms, or anything that needs to adhere to that type of business, someone has to inspect and make sure that they adhere to everything that would be inside that, right? So that has nothing of a concern on our end, that's just a byproduct of something that we're doing.
Correct. So, I can't speak to any ADA requirement.
Sure, sure.
You know, and I'm not gonna ask the petitioner about that, you know, if there's, if there has to be a reasonable foundation made for a patron, it's a place of public business, if someone were to force the issue, we got to comply with it.
Yep, okay. That was my last question.
One more, just sorry, one more. Last meeting, again, I know Mr. Calhoun and I asked some tougher questions, but, I mean, we did say positive things about this, and I, we need that new business in Johnsburg, it's something I think we all can agree on. I mean, we gotta grow the town, we gotta get the revenue, so. My two cents are gone now.
All right, so does anyone from the commission wish to make a motion to approve, deny the tax amendment proposed by the petitioner, or does someone wish to table matters to a further deliberation? There is another August 27 meeting, but does anyone care to make a motion?
I'll motion to recommend the tax amendment. I'll second.
Okay. So we have a second?
For I-1 only, yes. I believe that's an established right, correct?
Yeah, is that part of your motion?
Yes, for I-1, I'm sorry.
I just don't like the way this agenda's written.
It's not the way the agenda was written, that was the request that was made.
Yeah, for I-1, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, we have a second, so...
Well, is there any further discussion, or do people feel comfortable going to a roll call vote without additional discussion?
Roll call vote?
Yeah, we're there.
Member Barrett?
Yes.
Member Bank?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Member Calhoun?
No.
Member Dixon?
Hi.
Member Loud?
Yes.
Okay. That'll adjourn the meeting. We should have a motion adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn. Member Barrett?
Yes.
Member Bank?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.